Praise to join me in the pledge to the day. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, have a roll call for attendance, please.
Honorable Grant.
Present.
Honorable Bones.
Present.
Honorable Chumey.
Honorable Dog.
Here.
Honorable Kyler.
Here.
Honorable Penaro.
Present.
Honorable Terry.
Here.
Honorable Bentley.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Next, I've entertained a motion for approval of the September sixteenth council meeting minutes is presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any amendments or corrections to those minutes? Hearing done. A roll call, please.
Grant.
Yes.
Bone.
Yes.
Chumey.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kyler.
Yes.
Nano.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Abid.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Under presentations, uh, to council, uh, do we have anyone from the audience who wishes to address council this evening? Yes?
It's over a four-way stop sign.
That'll be later in the agenda. You have a spot. Anyone else? Yes?
The issue with ongoing fire hydrant has not been resolved yet.
If you want to step to the podium, state your name and your request.
Uh, my name's Chris Smith. I live at three one seven North Sunny Lane Park Drive. There's been a fire hydrant that's been covered since March or April of two thousand and twenty-two, alright? It had a brand-new cover on it when it was done inspection. It is now leaking worse, and I have called about it. I have like four or five times, I have been told that, "Oh, we have to order it. It's a special one. Oh, we don't have the money for it," you know, and stuff. Well, this is going on two years. I mean, going on three years. It's been two years. I'm sure if I lived by that college, it would have been resolved. Something needs to be done about this. It is leaking worse. So when winter comes this year, it's gonna go ahead and freeze, and it's gonna leak even more, alright? Cap it off, or go ahead and replace it. One of the two, please, because it's getting worse.
We'll have Public Works look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have someone else who wishes to address? Yes?
A four-way stop sign on.
You're, you're on the agenda, so we'll call you when that one's ready. Anyone else wish to address council?
I gotta give my kids a song.
Hearing done.
Don't be sorry.
We'll move on to our consent agenda, and we have one item, and that's, uh, approval for, I'm sorry. We have the other item we have is the swearing in of Tyler Osborne as our. Did I skip over something? Chief, Rex.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I, never mind.
Tonight we have Tyler Osborne being promoted to captain, and we asked that he be, be, uh, swearing, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I.
I.
Tyler Osborne.
Tyler Osborne.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of captain.
The duties of captain.
For the City of Monmouth Fire Department.
For the City of Monmouth Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're duly sworn.
Now we'll move on to consent agenda. We have one item, and that's approval of the bills.
Let's pay the bills.
Very good.
I have a motion and a second. Any items be removed for further discussion or consideration? Hearing done. A roll call, please.
Oh.
Yes.
Chumey.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Connor.
Yeah.
Nano.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Abid.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Under committee in the whole, we have a request for a four-way stop sign at North Fifth and East Boston intersection, as well as parking signs in front of the driveway at two twenty-two North Fifth. Mr. Brett Melton, you wish to step to the podium and make your request?
Cap, I'm Brett Melton, and I'm requesting two things. So the first thing is a four-way stop at, like you said, the North Fifth and East Boston. Reasons being, it's right near the college parking lot, and kids are flying through there sometimes. And being that corner house at two-two-two, I see a lot of it. And my kids are of age now where they're riding their bikes throughout the yard. There's kids walking to school in the mornings. And I just wanna make it safer for the community, as well as for my kids. Uh, the second thing I have is the easement or area where I park my car out front is, um, people are parking there from time to time, like for big events, and they're blocking me in. So I didn't know if there is a way that I can either put something up myself, or we can put up signs that, um, you know, tell people no parking area. And that's it.
Is that a driveway?
Yeah, it's like an easement slash, there's rocks there where I park my car, right here.
It's kind of parallel to the road, uh, there, Brian.
Yeah, there's no garage, so the only place I have right here is.
I drove by and looked at the intersection earlier today, but I didn't notice that.
Okay. So for like the parade, cars were parked all the way through here, and I barely could get my car. And I had to call the cops, and they said, "Well, we aren't ticketed," everything like that. So I found a way to squeeze through the cars to get to my property, and I just parked in my yard. So that was one. The second one was for, uh, the football game, people were actually parking in here. And it was, it's kind of an inconvenience. So I didn't know if there was, I can block it myself, or put signs up, or some guys could do that.
We, we do have that area marked for residential-only parking, but, um, apparently during the, mostly in the football games. So.
Yeah, they, yep, they're parking inside that grass area, yep.
Is there any way, Chief, that, I mean, since it's already marked residential parking only, that way, if he does have to call, that they can know that, yeah, we need to take care of this, because it's.
Uh, it, I mean, it's something, if we go there, we can run the plate and find out who owns that vehicle, and try to get ahold of them. If they're at the football game, on the football field, that might be hard to do. Uh, we can't tow the vehicle, uh, for that, um.
I thought the only duty, no parking between the signs.
Yeah.
Perhaps something like that.
Yeah, if you put no parking, uh, signs up spanning that area, that, that may alleviate, that, that, that may not keep someone a hundred percent from parking there if they're from out of town, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah. So I did talk to the officers and officers, said if I wrote this car, table was two cars, I'd ticket, he'd have to write the whole street. And he didn't really wanna do that. So they were from out of town, too, after running the plate, and I said, "Just don't, don't worry about it." So then I decided to come here, figure things out from there.
Is there, what's the logic behind not being able to tow them?
It, I think it has to reference, and if Mark comes on, he can, uh, pipe in, it has to reference in, uh, our tow ordinance that we tow for someone parking in residential area. If he's on, if someone's parked on private property, uh, it's up to that, the, the property owner to, to make that tow. Um, it's not necessarily parked legally, because that is a residential parking area. But it's, it's hard to do, and that's usually the time we have the, the issues with the spillover parking for games and whatnot. We have a lot of people coming from out of town, and there's nowhere to park, you know? And so they, they park everywhere they can.
What's the deal on the, on the residential parking? Is that parking at, is that just at night, or is that?
The, the residential.
I can't remember that ordinance.
The residential parking in that area, I believe, is all the time. Uh, unless it's specified on the signs, which you've seen between two AM.
I've seen those, but that's not what's on this street.
Correct.
So this is twenty-four-hour residential?
It just says residential parking. And you'd have to have permit to, to park in residential parking.
So you're not getting a lot of, a lot of the people parking in front of other drives, just his, because they don't realize it's a driveway?
No, they're all over.
They, but, yeah.
But they're probably not parking in front of driveways.
Yeah, probably.
It's your parking space.
Right. So where my house is my parking spot, they were parked all up the grass, even onto the other person's property, too. But their driveway's on the other side, so they weren't blocked in just all the property yet.
So yours isn't a trist, trysto drive. What I'm getting at is a lot of people aren't just blocking everybody's driveway. It's just yours, because you're.
Do you agree with this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they probably don't realize that's a parking area for the property owner.
I just moved there, was on the market for a year, and I just wanted to set the tone, like, hey, let's try not to park here, but if they're from out of town.
What's your sign right there say? The one that's right there?
I just, residential parking.
I guess it's residential. So, yeah, I guess we've already got a pole there, so if they had to put one at the other end, and just no parking between the signs.
Yeah, so it is to be towed. I don't, I mean, I would put, I would put, for instance, speed that off.
I think we'd have to, uh, uh, put that in ordinance, I believe. Unless it was a traffic hazard, uh, we'd have, we'd have put that in.
Yeah, so there's a picture right there. That was the parade.
I've seen it, yeah.
I guess my concern is just if, that was the parade, and we got people parking in the driveway, and parking.
Yeah, it gets blocked down.
That seems like a good idea.
On, on game days, uh, when the college has a football game, if someone's blocking driveway or a fire hydrant, we will ticket, uh, the vehicle. Um, blocking a fire hydrant, we could, that's a safety issue, obviously, and, and we could tow the vehicle away from blocking the fire hydrant. But we'd want, if they're blocking driveway, we try to find out who the owner is and have him come move the car.
For me, I mean, the parking situation from the college is quite big already. I mean, they've got lots of spaces.
Mm-hmm.
Can they, can they announce it over the loud speaking system? I mean, if you front out and could tell them and.
They do, they have before.
They have?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think this is a situation, though, where people don't realize that's the property owner's parking, or his driveway. Uh, because it's on the boulevard between the street and the sidewalk, and people come in, they see that's an open spot, and they just park there.
But it is clearly like an off-street parking area.
It's a gravelled area.
It's a gravelled area.
It's an improved area.
Yeah.
Yes, the term is.
I mean, could we, what does it take to put another sign that just says no parking between signs? I mean, is there?
Is that, is that an ordinance requirement? I, I guess we'll have to check with.
Yeah, that would be an ordinance requirement.
Just for a no parking sign?
Yeah.
Yes, barely. Okay. Does not require an ordinance?
He said no.
It's just for one spot.
Get it, one spot? Yeah, just where he's parked.
Just the, probably the length of the drive.
I don't know how you describe that in an ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We'll look in to see what we can do with that piece of it. As far as the stop sign, uh, does council have, wish to direct the, s- make, uh, make a motion to direct, city attorney for the no stop, uh, for the four-way stop sign?
Joe. Uh, Chief. I can tell you, we've had zero accidents. Uh, I went back ten years at that location, at that intersection, been zero accidents.
I did that, too.
I understand your, your issue. I get a lot, because it's a blind intersection, right? I get a lot of them, my ward, if you're not my ward, but I'm against them there simply because of the flow of traffic. You know, people need, I know people blow the stop signs all the time.
Like a whole road is like nothing, so, yeah.
Right? I, I don't know where the stop signs are at, Chief. You, I mean, how far away are stop signs? Um, well, I drove by today. We got that, Boston's, we got, we just put up that new one. It's going the other way, then the next block. So there's a, there's one on, uh, there's one on Sixth, there's one on Fourth, and then there's one on Third that goes the other way. So there are, they're, they have basically, it's a two-block between the, between stop signs.
Because the, the one thing is, as you're coming from, like, the main road by like, by like the bank, um, you're coming down the hill to, to hit the college, when you're coming down that hill, you have a house right to your left. Kids are not slowing down too great. Like, it is, I'm surprised there wasn't even an accident within ten years. So we got that, and then the kids taking off from the parking lot, taking off, but, yeah, that's my only concern, so.
Seems like this primary traffic is on Sixth Street, and then that's one block over. I, I wouldn't know where there was a lot on that, on, on Fifth.
I think between Broadway and Euclid, uh, there's no signage for regulating traffic going north and south.
On Fifth.
On Fifth.
If it's coming down the hill, that hill there, Austin, I might consider something on Boston, maybe.
Or a yield sign just to slow them down instead of stop signs on every corner? If it's an uncontrolled intersection, which I think that was an uncontrolled intersection, I mean, I would.
Yes. I'd say, I'd be, I'd be willing to, I'd look into, like, yield going one way, kind of just to control it more than just being completely open.
Just having at least a yield going one way would be, seems like most of the yield signs are east and west. Driving in that, you know, that's close to where I live, so.
That's, that's what I, if you're gonna sign it, uh, for the east and west traffic, yeah.
And that's where the hill's coming down anyway, correct? Yeah, it's coming down there, down the hill, down Fifth.
So that's where you want the yield as you're heading to the college?
Yeah.
Going, yeah, going east and west.
Yeah.
Okay. I would, yeah, I mean, however you all look at it. Whatever you guys wanna do for the rest of the city, but a four-way would be best. That's up to you.
Either way, it's gonna control a little bit, slow it down, to stop from, uh, accidents. We can't put stop signs at every corner, right? It'd be, in a perfect world, well, it would be a very perfect world.
Wouldn't be a very perfect world.
That would stop people, we can't stop people, you know, things happen, you know, I mean.
Just my, my biggest concern is Fifth. People are flying up Fifth, not Boston, but that's the intersection.
Do we need an argument with, uh, yield sign?
I don't wanna continue on forever, either, so.
You're.
Okay.
Yes, yes, we yield.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Yeah. So you would prefer, if we were to do anything, a, a yield sign on Fifth, going north and south?
That's where I see most of the cars flying. But the scarier part would be Boston going down the hill. I mean, because you don't really see around there that fast, so however you guys wanna handle that.
That's the east-west going down.
I think Boston gives you a better yield there, because.
I was thinking of.
That bank comes out, that bank comes out in Boston, there, as you look out on Fifth, it's, gets pretty high on the house to the north.
Alright, one percent. So however you guys wanna handle it? I mean, I, I would just prefer a four-way, but obviously that won't happen, so with the yield, however you wanna do that, would be great.
Well, I feel like when we have just completely uncontrolled intersections, people have trouble understanding that. They don't understand the yields to the right and all that.
I didn't know that, just till recently, so I give that, yep.
But, but I think when we put yield signs in, at least it slows, and I was just thinking, because of the hill, and I guess I, I could certainly drive over there and look around a little more, but, but I, I drove by it today, just to kind of preview what was going on. I would try to go by it.
And I can have off-circuit, uh, direct controls on North Fifth, and kind of get an idea of how the traffic is.
Because there is a speeding problem in a residential street. I mean, that's, like, not a main street. If there is a speeding problem there, that needs to be.
Yeah, so this is my house right here. So this is where the problem is, but this street right here is this, coming down to the college, and the parking lot's right here. But this is where it's hard to see, and this, uh, people are flying through here, too, and very much slowing down. So this is the scarier part right here, so if you wanna put yields there, that's fine, but this is where I have the problem. Is that acceptable?
Do we want to make a motion to, uh, place yield signs on Boston, uh, to direct the city attorney to draw an ordinance for that, or something else?
Chief, what'd you say about, like, directed control to try and get an idea of what's, is that something?
Yeah, I'll have, I can have officers sit down there and monitor, uh, various times during the day, monitor traffic.
Is that something we could do before we make a? I guess I, yeah, I don't wanna put the sign the wrong way.
That's fine. Or a speed trap.
To get some, get some more information and see what maybe, because maybe would be best to do more so.
Can you add that data for us in two weeks?
Yes.
I think you have some data in two weeks.
Now, I will say the speed limit, there's thirty miles an hour. Uh, everything.
You might make a little bit of money.
Everything in the city's thirty, unless it's otherwise indicated, so that is a thirty mile an hour speed.
I thought, I thought residential's were twenty-five.
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Unless it's, uh, signed differently.
I would say collect more information on that, and then, as far as parking, I would, I, I like the no, no parking between signs. I mean, that's no guarantee. That's gonna stop, you know, people, especially if they see your car parked there. They don't know that's the person who lives there, and not a, another person that came to the game, and they may park next to you.
That's true, but at least if the signs are up, I can then call the police and something.
Yeah.
They could be done.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying to set the tone, too. Like, I don't want people to keep parking there because they think they can. If they're from out of town, I really don't wanna ruin their day. But if I can't get home, and I have to, like, I had to go to the bathroom real bad, that, uh, for the parade, like, I had to wait for the cops to come across it, so.
Get it.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, let's, let's get those signs up.
We'll, we'll do something with the parking signs instead. And that doesn't need to be an ordinance? No. Is it? My only concern is, like, is what happens when the next person comes and says, "This is my parking spot. Can we put two signs? This is my parking spot. Can I put two signs?"
This, this seems to be different. I mean, this is actually.
This might be isolated.
It's an approved space.
It's not just a, it's not just a parallel parking spot on the side of the road. It's actually, there's parking.
I mean, most of the houses up the street don't have this situation.
So in this case, somebody pulled up and parked in a yard.
Essentially.
Good. I don't think they have tires at that point, but.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks for your time, everybody.
Next, we have a request for a four-way stop sign at North A Street in West Austin. Um, Christine, is that Yarcheck?
Austin.
There's getting to be, there's getting to be a lot of traffic there between, uh, the, the new activity at, at, uh, the Maclet Conception School and the downtown construction, I think.
That one's a mess.
That one's.
I, I hate stop signs, but that's, that intersection's a mess.
I don't. If you, go ahead and state your name, and then, the, the rest of council.
My name is Christine Jarasik, and I leave at two twenty-one West Boston Street. Um, there's a lot of traffic in that intersection, and there's constantly accidents, because there's, no one wants to stop. There's no stop signs, no yield sign. And that corner, it's got the fortress bank, you got the pharmacy across, then you got Save-A-Lot, and then behind that, you got the laundrette. So it's a very congested corners. And I got pictures of the three weeks ago accident that we had, because, like I said, nobody wants to stop. If you wanna look at the pictures.
I think you do have, uh, some traffic data on that corner.
I went back, uh, ten years on that intersection, and we've had twelve accidents there in, in ten years. Uh, and from the time when I was on the street, uh, we handled quite a few accidents at that intersection.
Yeah, I was really shocked when I saw that one. It was totally uncontrolled there. I, I saw that accident two or three weeks ago. I think I sent a couple of you guys pictures of that.
And, and it will probably pick up with, uh, ICS building, the drive.
Yeah, no, that's.
I think that's where they're gonna drop kids off at ICS.
So it's gonna increase traffic?
It's gonna increase traffic.
The other odd thing.
I'm, I'm right behind the street, the new school.
Yep.
The other odd thing is that shopping center, if you wanna call it that, I guess, there's no curbs, I noticed. So then people on the back and the north side, so people can just essentially come out of those lots anywhere.
Yeah.
So it was a strange.
Save-A-Lot, Axeline Park?
Well, like, if you're, there's Axeline, if you go on the north side there on Boston, there's no curbs. And then on Archer, there's also no curbs coming out from the laundrette at the backside.
Oh, okay.
So just like people can come out any sort of.
Or out anywhere.
I mean, you, you guys know how much I hate stop signs.
Yeah, I'm saying that, I think it's reasonable.
And if you go down to the next, oh, yeah, next block that way, or the other side of the ICS that, there is a four-way there on that street, I think, was it on, looking it on Google last, maybe I went one block too far.
I think you're on, you're on Archer. I don't know if there's any.
Yeah, Archer, Archer and.
Archer and A.
Archer and A has a.
No, three ways.
Yeah, 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 there's a. Those are three ways.
No, no, that's Archer, I'm sorry.
I'm talking about Boston and B.
Boston and B.
Boston B to the four-way of Boston and B, which is that other corner from ICS.
Mm-hmm.
And generally around the schools, we put stop signs out at different corners. Am I wrong on that, or correct? Because I think a lot of the schools have four-ways underneath about each corner.
They do.
School one way ten years ago by our house, we still got the stop sign. The council will get it. And I'm not arguing.
Does council wish to, um, make a motion to direct our city attorney to draft an ordinance for a four-way stop sign at that intersection?
Yes.
So, so Juan had the motion, and, uh, John has the second. Any discussion, questions?
Would you like to see the picture?
I, I think we're getting ready to direct the city attorney. I think we're okay. I would, uh, a roll, I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? A roll call, please.
Chumey.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
Nano.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bentley.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Bone.
Yes.
Motion carried.
This will come to council in two weeks for their consideration to vote, and then I think it takes two weeks for the ordinance to, if it's approved, to come into effect. Okay? Uh, next on our agenda is the building and zoning September report. Director Clark.
Mayor and council, the September report for zoning department continues to issue building permits. Notices for ordinance violations to include annoying junk and debris, unsafe structures, demolitions, issued citations, and paint rental and solar inspections. The list of the notices that are stamped, and pending notices as well. Planning commission, zoning district change, R two to B two. Uh, the city initiated a zoning district change for a lot at ten eighteen South Main Street, now owned by Billy McBride and Complete Parts and Repair Shop at one thousand South Main. Uh, that lot was previously known as ten eighteen South Main Street, uh, was presently zoned R two medium-density residential. It needed to be changed to be two neighborhood commercial. Um, it went, uh, for a first reading and was tabled because there was no quorum for that council meeting. And then it returned to council for a second reading, and was approved to go from R two, uh, to B two neighborhood commercial.
Excuse me, Chief, I, I think that first meeting, there was a quorum, but we didn't have six votes to pass it on in one reading.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what it was. Okay, I stand corrected. Um, so zoning district changed R two to M one. Midwest Pet Foods requested that, that change for the four properties, three houses that are now vacant properties, and a lot where they demolished some houses. And it, uh, went to the planning commission, uh, which is the advisory board council, and was approved for the zoning district change, and is, uh, counsel tonight, uh, for your consideration, and again, that's pending your approval. And then, strong community grant program, uh, grant funds that are awarded to the City of Monmouth. The last expenditure for that will be in November fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, we have recently completed the demolition at three fourteen West Third Avenue, and it had been awarded by council through Stone King Excavations. And then, uh, they were the only bid. The demolition was completed on the twenty-eighth of September. And then presently open projects, the Maclet Conception School gymnasium. Uh, they're really finishing up a lot of just the grading, and most of the driveway is bored now, as well as sidewalks. Uh, the bleachers are supposed to start going in here probably next week for that. And Decoel Company, all the infrastructure's in, uh, they've started putting the building up, and they've, uh, working on the back grading for the Diesel Island, uh, to the north. And then, as soon as the abatement gets completed on the old, uh, antique shop, Vet Clinic, Popcorn Factory, whatever you wanna call it, once that's all completed, the abatement, the demolition will go on that. And then Jimmy Johns is, uh, almost done with their parking area for the. And then Jimmy Johns is uh almost done with their parking area for the alleyway, but they're still finishing some of the front parking lot as well. And they'll be probably closing that job out here, I would think, in the next couple of weeks. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next up, we have the August report for Woodard and Current, Braden Bloodso.
Good evening, so I will be permanently taking over for Richard Nelson, who was here for a few months. Um, who took over for Andy Jackson. So before I get started, I would just probably strongly suggest that if anybody needs anything from me, want to talk about anything, uh, I implore you to reach out to me. Um, I can make time for you and if you have any issues, they we can talk about it and I can complain to Lou about it, so just let me know. So of course, the August public work summary, we pumped water, we've treated wastewater, there are specific numbers in there for everybody. Uh, we've had a pretty good month, um, not very many issues, uh, safety wise, we've done really well. Um, but the big thing I wanted to talk to you guys about tonight was all the capital projects we've got going on and updates on those. So our West Harlem Water Main Phase Two, which is gonna be stretching from North G Street to the interstate, should be beginning this month, by the end of the month, and it looks like it's gonna take about a month to finish construction. So I'm personally hoping by the end of November, we should see that finished up or really close. Uh, Advanced Plumbing's gonna be doing that work there and I'm sure they're gonna do a good job and we'll be knocking that one out. When you walked in, I'm sure you probably saw the square, uh, that one, we're making progress. Uh, the quadrant that we're in, which is the northeast quadrant, they're hoping that we will have that done by the time winter turns its head and starts coming in. Of course, I'm hoping we get a little bit further. Um, as of today, I spoke with our engineer out there, best case scenario, looks like this quadrant could be done in a week and a half. So I don't know how true that's gonna end up being, but uh it looks like we've got good hopes of maybe catching up on time lost. So altogether on that project, according to Porter Brothers and our engineer out there, we're looking at probably by the end of the summer next year to have that done. Um, I think he's being kind of conservative with us, they're starting to move a little bit quicker, so we'll see how it goes, but um looking at summertime next year to have that all done out there, so. Something that you guys might have heard about, in the southeast corner of town, the federal EPA has been in town. And if you went to the Warren County, if you went to the Pride View Festival, you would have seen the EPA had a tent there. I don't know what that area is called, where all the tents are, so the political tents, but the EPA had a tent set up there. And they're allowing us to participate in the Glow Program, which is the Get the Lead Out Program. Basically trying to help us get lead service lines out of town, replace them with plastic, um, get that out of our water. So they were here again because they sent six members of the federal EPA to help us go door to door, knocking on doors. Kind of spreading awareness about lead service lines, but the main goal was to get into basements and try and identify what they're made out of. Right now, we're in the phase where we haven't started construction, but we're planning and we're trying to figure out our funding. Um, the more we can knock out as identified as lead, we can kind of get a better idea for our cost estimate, so that's really what they were here for. Um, to add to that, the Glow Program has recently told us they're going to be giving us roughly a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of pop hole in. So sometime in the near future, I haven't gotten the timeline, uh, but sometime in the near future, we can expect to see a local contractor funded by the US EPA doing roughly six hundred houses worth of identification out in the front yards. So what they'll do is they'll come in, they'll suck a hole down to your service line, is it copper, is it lead, is it plastic, mark it up on your list. And then if it needs replaced, we'll have a better idea of, you know, how many need done, so. And that's all at no charge to the city, so it's a pretty good program that we're in and we're pretty lucky to have it, so. Um, the big one that I know you guys probably wonder about quite a bit is with the West Harlem Road Construction. Uh, we're actually finally, it seems like we're making progress on this, we had the plans sent in to the state, to the Department of Transportation from IMAE. And we've finally gotten requested revisions back for it, uh, IMAE's making those revisions. And it looks like that project will be sent out to bid in January, um, as long as the state can get back with us, which they've got enough time, we should be good to go. Um, so we can expect that to start probably pretty early in the spring, so. Uh, and that one there, uh, it'll probably be a few month long project, but again, end of summer next year, we should be seeing that one getting completely buttoned up. So, uh, the only other thing I can think of when it comes to our capital projects or public works. Out at the wastewater plant, our UV disinfection system is wrapping up and we should see a startup on that next week. And uh, I understand if you guys aren't interested, but if anybody ever has an interest in seeing what the wastewater plant looks like or how it works, uh, feel free to reach out and we can set something up, so. Um, but again, my name is Braden Bloodso and I'm happy to be here with you guys, and if there's any questions I can answer, I'm more than happy to.
I have one question.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of flags in my yard, I guess there's sewage under my house, which you can talk to about.
I can talk to you about, yeah.
Okay, do it after or now?
Uh, we can do it after, that's fine. Yep, I probably talked too long anyways, so.
There there is an item here for a new fire engine truck, is that under the auspices of work you're talking about right now?
No, it is not, so I I believe Lou and the mayor are gonna talk about all of our capital spending, I was just talking about what's going on right now in terms of public works, so. Did you?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
I was gonna mention, I I went out there and went on tour with those, both guys gave me a tour.
Oh.
And if if you want to examine all of your money being spent well, you ought to go look at that water.
It's pretty cool.
That place is spotless and they do a great job. Nice to see that our employees are doing that, we appreciate that.
Well, they they do a great job, so, thank you.
Yeah, it's a cool place, I did a tour of it.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of the trick or treat hours uh for October thirty-first, Halloween, um, and we are five thirty to seven thirty. I would entertain a motion for approval of those hours.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing on a roll call, please.
Don? Connor?
Yes.
Nano?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Benji?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Boom?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, we have approval of a redevelopment agreement with Midwestern Pet Foods, Lou?
Yes, uh, you may be familiar with this project, two weeks ago, we approved their TIF uh application. And uh, this is for the demolition of three homes on South D Street uh for a total cost of forty-five thousand two hundred dollars. Again, I, as I mentioned, council had approved the TIF application, the redevelopment uh agreement just simply puts uh uh into a contractual language, uh, that agreement. It is a um, an agreement that were, um, it's performance based where uh only the uh growth in the property taxes generated off of these three parcels where those homes were um uh demolished will be used as the source of of funds to provide a rebate of any developable expenses. The forty-five thousand two hundred uh in demolition costs are uh TIF eligible and so it uh depending on what their redevelopment plans are for those lots, uh, it may take a few years to start generating um incremental uh property tax revenues. But again, these would be the only funds through the TIF district that would be used, there would be no um municipal um tax revenues that would be used uh to provide this rebate, so uh it's very consistent with the TIF applications, so I would ask for your approval.
I would entertain a motion for approval of the redevelopment agreement with Midwestern Pet Foods.
So moved.
In a second?
Thank you.
In a second, any questions or discussion?
That looks nice.
Yeah, they've got it all there.
Cleaned up.
Yeah, and I think they're planning some expansion in that area at some point, so. It's good. Hearing done, a roll call, please.
Connor?
Yes.
Nano?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Benji?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Boom?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Shane Larson's here with us tonight, um, and this is for approval of the airport terminal bid. As you recall, the uh, we lost not only the hangar, but our office uh at the old airport, uh, we've gotten the hangar rebuilt with insurance proceeds and a lot of grant dollars from the state. And uh, this is the kind of the, and we've got our parking lot out there and this is kind of our final piece to get this restored is the terminal office building. Shane?
Good evening, everyone, as you saw, um, we were hoping to get more bids than that, we had about a half dozen uh people asked for bid documents, but we ended up only getting the two bids, um, I assume Lou, they have the bid summary sheet? And as you see, we had a low bid from Heine Construction of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Um, the second bid we had was from MSI out of Gelsberg at five hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Um, Heine does a lot of work like this, is Heine, are they doing Vex? Cause I was doing that, I was thinking they do quite a bit of work for Vex, so. I mean, Heine, they're they're a very reputable company, um, I haven't really had a chance to talk to them yet about schedule, if it is awarded, but though, I know this job is very important to get done as quickly as possible, so. I mean, any questions for me?
It's a, I think, Brian, maybe it's a pretty basic design, more open classroom, meeting room, space with one office, two restrooms and a utility rooms kind of.
Yeah, we downsized it multiple times to try to economize and get it down to where it would be a lower cost building to maintain and try to keep the construction cost down, which it seems like construction costs just astound me every time, but. But yeah, it's a, it's a pretty bare bones, basic building, give access to to pilots coming in and stuff, and I mean, that, it does definitely makes a difference. I was thinking, you know, earlier today, we used to have, you know, Clover League when they were building, they brought uh people in, flew in regularly, Coon's would come in all the time, Wells Blue Guys in and that, and a Baron from Indiana. And you know, and a lot of that has disappeared because we don't have a place, you know, just like my company. They won't fly us to an airport where there's nowhere for the pilots to stay. You know, we're not gonna sit on the ramp in cold and hot weather, so definitely helps, you know, hopefully we'll be able to get another, another courtesy car out there, that definitely brought some money into town, I know that, you know, a lot of people would come in and have dinner and do a little shopping and fly back out, so. Just would be great to get back to kind of where we were before. Before we lost all planes and the hangar and the terminal and, you know. It's definitely had an impact on the, I was looking today at the economic impact statement for the airport, it estimates brings about five hundred and three thousand dollars a year into the community. You know, with the spraying and the and the primary and secondary jobs and uh you know, and the funny part is, and I don't know this is a hard figure, but as as I remember before the pandemic, when we lost, before we lost the stuff, I think that number was about a million and a half a year. So it's definitely, you can see even from the state Illinois, the impact numbers, it's had a significant impact on the amount of economic impact the airport has for the city, so. That's what I got.
Thank you. Any questions for Shane?
Where's the funding come from?
This is for the, from the insurance proceeds.
Okay.
From the loss. And we do have adequate insurance proceeds to cover this.
Real quick, was there a fire or storm or what happened, was it?
There was a fire.
There was a fire, okay. Destroyed the hangar, the, all the planes and uh.
Four years ago, fire was in twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, October.
Yeah.
Right where I left for first type rate. That was the insurance company on Sunday and which taxes on Monday. But yeah.
So I would entertain a motion for approval of the low bid from Heine Construction.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion in a second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing on a roll call, please.
Nano?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Benji?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Boom?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Shane.
I'll start working with Heine and circle back with you guys.
If they can start tomorrow, that'd be great.
Well, if they're right here in town, Brian, just get them over there. I'll I'll be in touch, Lou.
Thank you, thank you, Shane. Um, next we have the capital projects funding work session, I think everyone's packed it, we had a capital projects funding and we had a lot of projects going on, I think most all of these have been to council in in various stages and uh again, I think it, I'm gonna let Lou kind of run through this, but I think Lou would kind of maybe touch on you know, how we got our capital reserve to provide the match. And we don't get any grant funds or we can't use grant funds without local match, that's kind of the key to the getting grant funds, so maybe sure, provide some history on how how we were able to essentially create those funds.
Sure, uh, well, let me begin, uh, because I know that there's some newer council members since we went through the process of selling the transfer station to LRS and um, and I've complimented the council uh in the past for the the force, uh, site it it took to sell that property uh to a a private waste hauler and then um it allowed us, not only did we receive two point two five million dollars for the for the land itself and we used a million of that two point two five to buy a new ladder truck for for the fire department. But it also uh decreased expenses in the general fund budget, which enabled, those monies being freed up uh because we were heavily subsidizing um uh both residents and non-residents and commercial businesses who brought stuff to that uh, to that transfer facility and to uh and a cost that, and a cost that we did not receive enough revenues to offset the cost, so the city was heavily subsidizing that. And it also allowed us to figure out some money that were was being allocated on the closure of the old landfill, which had been closed in nineteen ninety-two, but we've been struggling with the online EPA to to get them to uh issue the the certificates of book. There were significant savings in operating costs that allowed us to go out and borrow an additional five million dollars. And with that, we'll street up revenues to be used for debt service on that bond. So we have.
As the restructuring of all of our other debt, too much lower interest rates, but yeah, it was over bump, over two hundred thousand dollars a year cost reduction.
So there was, there were, uh, it was a good opportunity for us to generate about six, six and a half million dollars that we could use then to help leverage, uh, allow the state and federal grants that we were going after, in fact, uh the Public Square Project obviously has a a local match requirement and a number of the um grants that we have received for water mains, uh, the water treatment plant that we'll be reviewing with you again tonight. Uh, and and uh, a number of other projects like the sewer collection system and the water distribution system. Uh, the grant fund we were getting did require local match, so this really provided a uh an immediate source of money to leverage all of those state fellow grants that were out there. So with that background, we kind of wanted to go through the list of projects that have been in the queue now for some time and and are underway. And I know that um Braden uh mentioned a couple of these, but at your seat, there's a two-page here spreadsheet. And just kind of wanted to uh highlight that, we can go through details later, but let me just highlight the the project. You've got the West Harlem Phase Two Water Main and this is what Brandon mentioned, this is from G Street out to Highway thirty-four. And then you got the actual uh street reconstruction of West Harlem. And you can see there's some um, some uh grant funds coming in, but there's also a need for a local reserve, uh, local uh match to to undertake that, we recently completed the North Sixth Street. We recently completed the North Sixth Street project. And again, you can see there were a variety of fund sources there. North Fifth Street Sewer Replacement, this was an important project that we've been trying to undertake for some time. It's a fairly significant cost, but we have identified a potential funding source for undertake that, but will likely require some local match. Well Seven, we, we've learned that there is a, this is, Well Seven is out there on West Harlem where the water tower is. And we have, we're looking at building a new water plant that will provide sufficient water to support not only economic expansion by local businesses, particularly Smithfield and increased hog harvesting production there. But we, we've also found that there's a potential issue with the pump in Well Seven, which will provide that water to, to the, the new water treatment plant. So, that's, that's been identified. That's obviously a, a cost that we, we need to undertake. The Downtown Sewer Project, I know we've talked to you several times about this. You've been supportive of us pursuing some USDA funding. And now we're looking at perhaps a revolving loan fund from the Illinois EPA. But this sewer runs basically from the Strom Center, runs between the vacant parking lot there where the old tin cup and Millennial's building is located, runs under the street. Then it actually runs under the Bijou Movie Theater. And, and then it continues across the South First. It actually goes under a portion of the Armory Building.
And the Armory Building.
And the, and, and. This is a, this actually was built in the late eighteen hundreds. It's in serious state of deterioration. There is a, there is a real concern that this could potentially collapse. And if it collapses under one of the buildings, you know, we've got a major problem here. And it's a, it's a major trunk source, so it carries a lot of not only wastewater, but surface water with it. So, I think we've been talking about this, I know, for at least the seven and a half years that I've been here. I was long as it lasts a year, if you recall.
The USDA funding has been a real challenge. We've been continually working with that. We're making one last plea to them before we move on, probably to the state revolving loan fund for funding for that project, which again, we can service that debt with TIF funds, as you can see in the notes over there.
Okay. And then the, the Public Square Project, the three point seven there, and again, local funds are needed. The South First Street Parking Lot, which has pretty much been completed, there's some feeing costs associated with that. That will mostly be funded with local TIF dollars under the downtown TIF district. The, what's called the Phase Three CSO Sewer Gate. This is a, this is a bottleneck in the flow of sewage, sewage water coming from the city to the, the pump station down behind the cemetery, where the old wastewater treatment plant was located. There is a, I'll call it a gate or sluice or whatever, but it, it, it doesn't allow, when, when we have a heavy rain, it just doesn't allow enough water to, to get pumped out to the wastewater treatment plant, and it starts backing up into the sewer line. And so, by, by reconstructing this gate, we will be able to allow all that water to run through to the pumps, get it out to the plant, and, and eliminate this bottleneck. That's a, obviously very important for addressing the mandates that we have from the Illinois.
And some of our folks on the ground there suggest that our goal, if we, if we get this done, is to get our number of combined sewer overflow incidents below the required level. And we are hoping that we found out that this is kind of our last big project of opportunity, that we can increase the flow through this area. And hopefully, the goal is to avoid the next project, which is the Phase Three of the Combined Sewer Overflow Detention Pond for three and a half million dollars, or greatly reduce the size of it. But we've done a couple of those projects of opportunity. The, with the EPA grants, we put the detention ponds in the high school parking lot. We've done some other diversion projects, here and there's, we've come available. And so, again, the goal is to try avoidance of the, the next project.
No, no, that's fair. Yeah. The Disinfection Project, Brayden kind of highlighted that. We're pretty much wrapping up that project. It's been funded through EPA loan, the SRA, the state revolving fund. And we will be getting about nine hundred thousand of that two point five given. The lead service line, again, we've updated you, that's a, obviously another mandate that's being handed down by the state and federal EPA's. And while we've been successful in getting some funding for this, you can see the nine hundred sixty thousand, that was the grant we got through Congressman Sorenson. We got another two point seven through the Illinois EPA. But we've got ten million dollars worth of lead service line that need to be replaced. So, we've got six point three million dollars of unfunded obligation that we need to undertake. Moving on to the second page. We do need to resurface West Harlem from G Street to the bypass to Highway thirty-four. From G Street, yeah, after the Army is playing. From G Street to North Main, that section will be completely reconstructed with curb, gutter, sidewalk, what have you. But from G to the highway, it'll pretty much just be a resurfacing of the existing pavement. Then we're going after grants for the one hundred, or I'm sorry, for the two hundred block of North Main Street.
And South Main.
And South Main. And we're looking for, obviously, perhaps using some of the.
Oh, no, that was the one we just replaced, Lou. Those are those two water mains that we replaced.
Oh.
In the one hundred block. In the one hundred block of North Main and West Broadway.
Yeah, and, you know, in preparation for the Public Square Project, we knew that the water main on, the water main that's on the one hundred block of South Main is, is in good shape. But we knew the one that runs on East Broadway here, across from Seagull, needed, actually need to be replaced. Well, we discovered once we got into the construction that the water main on North Main, as well as the water main on West Broadway, those two water mains were again, were old and in very bad shape. And we needed to go ahead and replace those because we were going to put multimillion-dollar improvements all over the top of them. And, you know, you know Murphy's Law, if we'd have done that, we'd have had problems with those water mains. So, we, we went ahead and fixed that up. And we did have to use capital reserves to, to address that, so. And then, I guess the last two would be the, obviously, the need for a new fire truck, as well as the airport terminal, which is the use of our restricted airport fund, which is restricted because we're using the proceeds from the insurance claim from, from that twenty nineteen fire, the old, the old hangar and the old terminal. So, if you look at, if you look at what we are trying to capitalize on, is that we've got over thirty-seven million dollars in, in projects that we know. And we're using about five point five million of that capital reserve as best we can to leverage these state and federal grants. In fact, if you look, that five, five point three five million of our capital reserves is actually leveraging nineteen million, seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars in, in, capital improvement projects within the city. That's a, that's, that's very good, leveraging state and federal signs.
Those are state.
Yeah, those are, those are grants. So, so that's what we're, we're trying to accomplish. We, you can see that we do have a number of projects that still have, we don't know exactly how we're going to undertake them, but they're on the list. We're aware of them. We know that everything on this list is, is important. And wanted to give you a sense of how we're going about, about planning for these capital improvements over the, the next few years, so. With that, I guess we, you know, any questions or comments you have?
I would like to understand the need for a new fire truck.
Well, Chief, you, you've explained it to me enough times. I, I do know that we've got three trucks, all of which have some issues, but why don't you go through the?
Sure. Well, we have the, the newer ladder truck that we've got in twenty twenty-one, I believe. And, but we do have three engines, and we're, the, right now, we're sharing all three of those engines just to keep one of them going at our south fire station. And I don't want to make it too bleak for you, but they are aging. There's one of the engines that is twenty-seven years old, and the other.
Casey, is this in addition to the ladder truck, three other engines?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the other two engines are twenty-one years old. And so, they're just having issues that are pretty typical of the age of the trucks. And one of them is actually out of service at the moment, needs some pretty extensive repairs. So, now we're relying on the other engine that is also twenty-one years old, and it has, you know, similar issues, I guess, because of its age, and then, and then the other twenty-seven year old fire engine. And so, yeah, they're, for the moment, the, the other two are reliable, but the worry is what might happen, you know, down the road with these fire engines when they, because of their age of their, the trucks.
I think the one that's out of service is, is having the motor rebuilt. And so, we're working on hopefully improving the issues there and trying to look at a couple of other issues while they're rebuilding the motor. So.
Yeah, I think we're trying to get one of these engines to be as reliable as possible to kind of buy us time and figure out how we're going to get to newer.
But the problem also comes in when you have a call out of the city, you don't have a reliable engine anymore.
Well, we're.
Because your first line one just left.
Yes. We're relying on the twenty-seven year old unit.
Which you had the geriatric radiator hose because we couldn't find a part.
Yeah. And it is getting harder to find parts for that truck, yes.
So, I, I appreciate Casey not wanting to make it bleak. But I, I mean, to me, our responsibilities are police, fire, and public works. And, and that's it. And, and although I, I cannot commend the city staff enough, the way you guys get grants is just phenomenal, and the funding, the job that you do. And, and I know that this is, I mean, we're, we're juggling a dozen eggs in the air. And I, I certainly appreciate that. But I do think that we, we have to make a concerted effort to figure out how we're going to fund an engine by July one, at least. The price is going to go up thirty percent. So, it's going to go from eight hundred and thirty thousand to probably over a million by January one. So, I, I just think the longer we wait, the, the deeper in trouble we are. And, and the other thing is, firemen have enough hurdles in front of them. Our guys are two-man companies. And a two-man, there's basically four jobs you have to do immediately. And we're asking two guys to do all four of those jobs. And, and they do it, and they're good at it. And, and I don't know what Mammon did to, to put the spirit into those guys, but they do it. They're dedicated. But, you know, the last thing they need is more hurdles in front of them. So, that's just my thoughts on using the priority there.
Well, yeah, like I said, we're, we're going to get that one rebuilt.
Yes.
To get us, obviously, increase reliability and.
And we're going to, it's an investment for later. We're still going to have to keep one of them.
No, it would be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And, but it's important, and we have it on the list to talk about.
Certainly.
And seek funding. And I know Casey's applied for funding grants a number of different times, and unfortunately, that's not one that came, came back to us. But it, it is on the list, and so we will continue to.
And we have been increasing our local, our local match to make that more competitive. So, I mean, again, trying to use limited resources to leverage other state and federal grant funds.
That is one of the most competitive grants out there. It's, it's very difficult to get those. You know, there's usually three hundred and forty-some million dollars in that grant, and only a small percentage of it actually goes to apparatus replacement. And, you know, there's usually probably over eight thousand grant applicants to this. And so, it's.
Seems like a lot of this stuff we've tried, like the, not screw, but the, the tanks, data.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we get, we got SCBA.
SCBA.
In Air Pax, we got grant one year with an air fill station.
Yeah.
And so, even just a few years ago, we got a gear extractor, particularly the gear and things like that.
Yeah, it seems like we've gotten grants, but they've been on the smaller side.
Mm-hmm. I think the last grant, we actually got one, I don't know if you counted. And that was.
Five hundred and fifty for those two engines.
Yeah.
So, that's how much they increased the last twenty years. And that was all granted.
Mammon College a while back kicked in and got us a fire truck, so may we reach out to them again?
We've just had administration change and we're in ongoing discussions.
What's, so what's the average cost of a rebuild versus buying a new truck?
I think the end chassis was about eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay. For the engine owner.
Engine owner, yes.
Back to your administrative change, what are you, and talk to them for, because their administration just changed? That we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Just inaugurated a new president.
Yeah. So, I mean.
Yeah.
So, you just gotta.
Do what we can. Any other questions on capital projects funding? Well, thank you, Lou. I appreciate it. And again, certainly feel like, you know, getting an eighty percent match for local funds is pretty good. Next item on our agenda, I think Don Toll's with us here this evening to talk about an engineering services agreement with Woodard and Kern for the design and construction and construction administration of the lead service line replacement program. And, and you guys have been doing a great job on this other funding piece for that, which we'll talk about a little later. So, I'll turn it over and you've been working with us and get the light out with the EPA as well.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, as Lou mentioned earlier, the city was awarded two point seven four seven million dollars for lead service line for this round, which is pretty remarkable because they cap it at two point three. We asked for more, they had money left over, and they gave it. So, so the engineering services that's in front of you today is to design, go to bid, construction, all of the coordination with IEP, contractor homes. And it's just estimated to be two hundred and seventy-five service line replacements. But what that'll do is, we'll go out and investigate the unknowns. And if they're not lead, we'll cover them back up and we'll keep going. So, at the end of the day, you'll probably end up with much more than two hundred and seventy-five because a lot of those are unknown. And once we dig them up and determine if they're lead, galvanized, or non-lead materials, then we can replace that as needed. So, in our past projects that we've had for other clients, typically you get two to three times more done than that because you just find some that aren't lead. Even like on the Sixth Street Project of Downtown, we thought we'd find a lot more lead and we didn't. So, we're hoping that continues. We know there's still a lot of lead and galvanize, but we're hoping to stretch that money out even farther. So, yeah, let's, before you, is start to finish for the lead service line. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer anything.
And the, the agreement is for two hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Don?
He said something about gal, we don't, we're not replacing galvanize.
We do. Galvanize is a material that, that lead will stick to. And, you know, inside galvanize, you get a lot of corrosion, you get a lot of stuff. So, it, it catches a lot of lead, and then it'll release it later on. So, galvanize is not a lead substance, but it carries the lead substance.
So, those are all. So those are also being replaced as well?
They are. Now, this isn't lead solder, that's been being not as hazardous, because it's just in a joint, it's not in the line, but if it's a galvanized material or a lead material, it'll get replaced. And what they're going to do is they go out and pothole, IEP requires them to do three potholes on every line, two on the public side, one on the private side. So they'll do one at the main, because the gooseneck that comes off the main, a lot of times those were put in on lead, the other, the main line might not be, but the gooseneck was, so they'll pothole at the main, and then they'll pothole on each side of the curb stop and determine, you know, if there's lead on any of those, and if there's lead or galvanize, then they'll replace that full line. And this will be private side two, so if a homeowner has lead or galvanize from the curb stop into the house, then it will be replaced within, or to 18 inches inside the house, or to the first shut-off, whichever's first, at no cost to the homeowner. This grant is 100%, no payback from IEP, and we're going to keep doing this every year until we get to the end and until they stop giving us free money. But, yeah, it's no cost to the homeowner.
Thank you.
Yeah, but then I already got an email that kind of lists everything, and then I had to take a picture and submit it, I just don't mind taking the right one, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we, part of the investigation that we did last time on another program, we had $40,000 to try to, try to see what all the unknowns were. So one of the things we did was send mailers out to every homeowner that had unknowns, and we asked them to go in their very own, and self-identify what's coming through the wall, and then we gave them a whole sheet that explains each material, what they look like, what you should look at, look for, and then how to report it. So we got some pretty good responses, we were hoping for more, but at least that gave us, you know, just more information to move forward.
Thank you, Don. Any other questions for Don? Hearing that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the engineering services agreement with Woodard and Kern, Design, Construction Administration for the Lead Service Line Replacement Program. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing that, roll call, please.
Curry?
Yep.
Capulet?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Bone?
Yes.
Trumey?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Vanero?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. We'll bring you back in a bit. Next, under resolutions, we have the tip funds for the local match of the ITEP grant.
Yes, the city is applying for a 1.75 roughly million dollar grant to the Illinois Department of Transportation under their transportation enhancement program, and what this grant is intended to accomplish is to continue the street skate improvements that we're making this year in the public square, and extending those improvements down into the 200 block of South Main and the 200 block of North Main. So there would be diagonal parking there, replacing the parallel with diagonal, the curb cutouts, the one lane, again, basically the same design, same concept, just extending it one block, both north and south from the public square. So it does require a, a local match of $436,556, which we would have available next year in our tip funds.
If we get the grant.
Yeah, if we get the grant. To provide a total project of about 2.2 million to undertake the street skate project. So we have already submitted the grant application, but we do need to supplement it with this resolution, obviously, actioned by a city council committing local funds to the match.
Any questions? Hearing that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution to provide tip funds as our local match for the site, tip grant. I have a motion, a second, and a second. Any other questions? Hearing that, a roll call, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Bone?
Yes.
Trumey?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yeah.
Canado?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Motion, Curry.
Thank you. Under ordinances, we have a first reading for change in zoning. This is for the houses that were torn down from our two medium residential to them one limited manufacturing on Southeast Street. Anything to add to that, Lou or Joe?
I'd like to facilitate their redevelopment by Iceberg.
And that was approved by the land commission unanimously. Okay. Anyone have any questions about that? Hearing that, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Yeah, you have a second? You have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Don? So a roll call for approval, please.
Grant?
Yes.
Bone?
Yes.
Trumey?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yeah.
Canado?
Yeah.
Curry?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Motion, Curry.
Don, would you please step up, and we'll talk about the approval, I think it's up to 3.3 million, I know they've been increasing these a little bit as they have funds available.
Correct. So part of the EPA, IEP process is the city agreeing to go into a loan, what they call a loan with IEP. Even though this is 100% grant, they still consider going into a loan agreement with IEP. So you receive 2,747 million, but as we found out last year with some of our clients, they end up having money left over, and so they gave it to the, they distributed to different cities. But if their ordinance wasn't up to that amount, then we had to redo the ordinance all over again. So what we're suggesting is you go into the ordinance with the understanding of 2.747, but leave it in there up to 3.3, in case they come up with extra money, want to give you extra money, we don't have to redo the ordinance. And if they do give you more, it's still 100% forgiveness, there's no match, there's no fines, obviously.
Thank you. Any other questions for Don? Hearing that, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved, a second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Bone?
Yes.
Trumey?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yeah.
Canado?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Capulet?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Motion, Curry.
Chief Switzer, I think you have some, talk to us about the surplus property at the police and fire departments.
Yes, we, we have two items that we need to declare surplus property, one's a riding mower, a diesel riding mower, it was actually a hand-me-down from the street department, cemetery, I believe, at the time, so it's been used quite a bit, and we've since replaced that, where we no longer need that mower. And we have a John Deere push mower that we don't use because it's hard to start, and we've tried to trade it, you know, for other equipment that we would need, the janitor would need to take care of the building, and we can't get rid of it that way, so I want to declare that as surplus property also.
And for fire?
Yes, we've had a few things. There was an old pop machine we brought from our old station out there, it was really just the guys use it, and lately, nobody's using it, and so it's just sitting out there on the truck floor aging, and so wanted to get rid of that. There are some truck tires, and I believe these tires, they're down at the Armory Garage, and they were actually tires that came over when we purchased the old ladder truck from Gillsburg, so they were spare tires that we bought with the truck, and so they maybe just need to be disposed of, but either way, we need to get them down to the garage there. And then the last thing is a tall tripod that's used for rope rescue, we've since replaced that, and it's got 15 or 20 years on it, so we just need to get rid of that.
Council, have any questions? Hearing that, I entertain a motion for approval of the declaration of surplus property on against the disposal of those in appropriate way.
So moved.
Second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing that, roll call, please.
Trumey?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yeah.
Canado?
Yeah.
Curry?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Bone?
Yes.
Motion, Curry.
Thank you. Next two items, I think Chief, I think you and the state's, or the city attorney have been working on some things, we've randomly just snagged with our old ordinances on the impound issue, let you just discuss that.
Correct. That would be section 78, chapter 78, impoundment in motor vehicles. First, what I would ask is that one of the reasons why we tow vehicles, we tow vehicles for various different crimes and reasons, one of them is suspended registration, and basically what we're seeing now, for various different reasons, whether it be at the state level, if there's a mistake, or the state's attorney drops a ticket, or a ticket's dropped by the city attorney, we refund, or the city refunds the driver of that vehicle when we tow it, the $500 impound fee, but the driver of that vehicle is still on the hook for the towing and the storage. And we've had, I think, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, 10 of those in the last handful of months, where we've refunded the tow fee to the driver, or the owner of the vehicle, but they were still on the hook for that $200 or $300 impound fee from the tow company. So what I'd like to do to alleviate that is remove towing vehicles for suspended registration from that ordinance, and then create another ordinance, which would be chapter 71 under licensing provisions, and add that ordinance saying that is, shall be unlawful to drive any vehicle upon any street or portion thereof, within the corporate limits of the City of Monmouth with a suspended registration, and the penalty for that would just be a city ordinance violation, the fine for that violation would be $350, and we take the towing out of it, and if it goes through the court system and the ticket gets dismissed, then that's the end of it, instead of that individual being on the hook for a $300 fee at one of the tow companies.
So this is being driven by the fact that when they get dismissed, then we have to refund money?
Correct.
Well, we refund the impound fee, we can do that.
Yes.
That's the $500, but what we can't refund, and the tow companies are not refunding, is the towing fee, and if it's there for a period of time, the storage fees, which can be $200 to $300 or so, and so what we're trying to do is eliminate that problem.
And there's various reasons why this happens. It could be the state's attorney dismissed the ticket, it could be the city attorney dismissed the ticket. I believe there's been mistakes that have happened on the state end of why that registration was actually suspended to begin with, and that's been corrected, so the registration should not have been suspended, so at that point, we're refunding the $500 tow fee, but they're still on the hook for the tow service and the storage, and I'd like to eliminate that aspect of it.
And this is a suspended-
Suspended registration.
As opposed to like an expired, just because it's been suspended for a reason?
Correct. Most of the time, it's insurance related, and there may be a disconnect. It happens a lot when people buy a new car, it happens when people move. Notices may be sent out by the state that they need to bring their information up current, and they've moved, and they haven't gotten this letter from the state that tells them they have to do that, but it has happened, I believe it was approximately 10 times in, within the last year, probably. Yeah, so we've got people that get things corrected, but they still have to pay 300, sometimes more, to the tow company for the tow and the storage.
The storage fee can be crazy.
And this way, we'll just issue them a ticket, they can drive away, they get it corrected, or if they're actually, there's something, a reason why their registration is suspended, then they pay the fine for the ticket. And the dollar amount on the ticket is such, because in the only vehicle code, the fine's actually $2,500 for this offense, and we brought that down at the city level to $350.
Any other questions?
What happened if it don't insurance, no license?
Say it again, Lou.
What happened if you don't have no license or insurance?
If, if, when we stop you, and you don't have proof of insurance, or you're expired on your insurance, and you don't have a driver's license, we're going to tow the vehicle because those are towable fences. So this suspended registration aspect of it doesn't really play into that, because there's other things that could be going on there also. So we'd write a city ordinance violation for the suspended registration, and then write them a state ticket for suspended driver's license, or something of that nature.
Any other questions?
Want to consider these two together, then?
I, I-
It sounds like that's the only-
Yeah, I would entertain a motion for approval of 24-21 and 24-22.
So moved.
And I have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing that, a roll call, please.
Don?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Canado?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Bone?
Yes.
Trumey?
I'm going to take a pass, thank you.
Motion, Curry.
Motion, Curry. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion for adjournment. I have a second, all those ready to say aye? All those, thank you.